County Commission for April 5th, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under your power, indivisible, and every being and justice for all.
Number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, a five-minute time limit per person, anyone wanting to speak during the agenda time must sign in prior to the start of the meeting, any requested action items must be scheduled for a future meeting. Mr. Powell, did you signed in, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Clinton Powell, I'm a resident of Brookings, I'm also a senior hydraulic engineer for Bros Engineering, which is a civil engineering firm here in South Dakota and North Dakota. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your guys' attention here this morning, and I know you guys are pretty deep into it already, is your guys' revised FEMA floodplain maps that are coming out for the county. And so, right now, there's a funding opportunity that's out that basically allows counties and municipalities to do a hydraulic study with eighty-five percent federal and state funds and then match through a variety of local funds. And so, one of the things that we've been doing in a fair amount of counties surrounding Brookings County is then actually taking those funds and looking at using FEMA's actual floodplain model. Add additional culvert structures and take a look at, take a look at the hydraulics that are in that model to actually then pull some of the, pull some of the residences back out of the FEMA floodplain model. And so, I just wanted to make you guys aware that that, that those funds are out there right now. I know I'd sent a couple, a couple emails over to the commission, but I don't know, I guess I, you guys see an awful lot of stuff, so I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of that. We're actually, right now, I'm in the middle of that process up in Hamlin County. A good portion of the city of Esteline got moved into the floodplain last year, and so we're in the middle of that process of, of pulling some of those homes back out and updating their floodplain model. In the middle of that same process over in rural county and a number of other counties kind of in south central South Dakota as well. So, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that that funding's out there. And with eighty-five percent, you know, of the dollars coming from somebody else, that's a heck of a deal that, that I'd hate for you guys to, to pass up. So, just making you guys aware.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next on the agenda is number four, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
We do need to add. One twenty-five-two-four for contract negotiations as well.
All right. Is there any other changes? I'd look for a motion to accept the agenda with the change.
Move approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, consent agenda, approval of minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorization, approval of human services report. I'd look for a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, number six, approval of claims. Questions on the claims, if not, I'd look for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion on the claims? Hearing none, all in, please, actually, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to department head reports, Dustin.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Any questions to start off with the report I presented to anyone? So, I'll start with attendance, archery, we had a hundred and eighteen, gun range, we had a hundred and twenty-three, it's starting to slow down a little bit because it's getting a little nicer outside. We had twenty-eight events from our, our last meeting. We finally wrapped up the gun league, did something fun, gave away a membership for the person, the two people that scored the lowest, tried to get them in a little bit, get them a little better for next season, I guess. Put their names on the plaques for the winner of the ladies league and then the mixed league. We're continue, continuing to attract more agencies into the facility for qualifications using the meeting room, all that good stuff. Last night, they wrapped up, Game Fish and Parks actually wrapped up a Hunt Safe class, the first one in person in like the last three years. We actually had a young lady come from Pierre to take it, so that was, that was very good. It was a three-day course. They started last week, Thursday and Friday with in-class lecture stuff, and then last night, they had their field day where they shot twenty-twos in the gun range and did some mock setups in the archery range, climbing over fences and all that good stuff. Hoping to do one in the fall and then one in the spring every year. I attended our basic pistol class that Mr. Kilmer teaches for the facility. Just wanted to give a, a better explanation when people call in, I figured I should attend it, but it's very well-run. I learned a lot, he, he takes a lot of time in teaching people just the basic fundamentals of a firearm and safety, so it's a very well, very well-run class. I attached a list of items that we've been working on since I started, thanks to you guys for approving all that stuff on just building maintenance over the last, I guess, two years, just trying, trying to keep track of kind of some lease agreements we have and then general maintenance that we do within the building, just so I can keep track and then give you guys a better understanding of what we're doing, I guess. We did, if you guys remember, last year, we added that electric heater in our Game Fish and Parks offices, just to try to help with that heat. It wasn't working properly, so train actually came back in, dialed into the unit and was, figured out that it wasn't getting enough airflow, was only working at about fifty percent. It's now working at a hundred percent, and we got her about eighty degrees in them offices, so that's good, Rocco's sweating, Rocco and Jeff over there, so that's awesome, it's working, working like it should now. I've been working on the finalized drawings and estimates and that type of stuff for the viewing room, which is later in the meeting. I'll be out of the office April seventh through the thirteenth, and then with our little pistol range committee, we're always trying to keep up with, I guess, safety procedures and standards and with more people coming into the building, we're figuring out more things that we gotta do differently to, to keep everybody safe and let them have fun. Any questions for me at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Bob.
Good morning. I sent the staff reporting your thing, since that staff. Couple things, we got an email, which is actually the second email, on this pipeline that they're proposing, the Navigator Hartlang Greenway CO2 Pipeline. I was contacted by the, the person that can answer any questions, his name's Jason Glott, G.L.O.D.T. So, I got his contact number emailed down in the office if anyone has any questions on that. I'm also been in contact with the Pipeline Safety Trust, that's a, that's a pipeline organi, it's a safety organization that keeps track of things like pipelines and, and things like that. And they sent me a, a copy of a, of a correspondence that they had, it's called State of Federal Carbon Dioxide Transmission Pipeline Safety Regulations. Basically, they took a look at the federal guidelines, which is Code of Federal Regulations one ninety-five, and took a look at, at the weaknesses of it, and so if any commissioner wants that, I can send that out to you. Of course, that's at the federal level, once, once, if it, this is all proposed right now coming out of, out of Brookings, of course, down to Iowa, and as it goes farther, we can get more information, we can actually have these people come in and talk to the county commission if you'd like. And they haven't filed at the Public Utilities Commission yet, it sounds like they are getting close to doing that. There is another pipeline filed with the Public Utilities Commission, so when, when talking to citizens, you need to keep the two separated, I mean, the one coming down through Brown County, that's not the one that we're talking about, they're two different pipelines, but they both do the same thing, carbon, carbon dioxide capture, so. I did submit an application to go down and receive training about a, about two years ago, two thousand and nineteen's when they canceled the training. It's called Framework for Healthcare Emergency Management, and it also includes a two-day exercise with all the ICS positions. That's, that's scheduled in the first part of May, I went to my liaison and got permission to apply for it, and I'll turn a travel request in for that in the next meeting. The Center for Disease Control has authorized a second booster shot for individuals fifty years and older. I went ahead and got my booster shot on Saturday, me and my wife. We don't know if the PPCC will, will set up for this particular second booster or not. Our next PPCC meeting, of course, is next, is on the fourteenth, and we'll probably be discussing it then, but we didn't have a real big turnout on the first booster shot, so something tells me we may not end up doing it. But it's easy to get the second booster shot, all you have to do is go to your local pharmacy and, you know, go to your local pharmacy or go to your clinic, tell them, the, the key thing is, it has to be four months after your, after your first booster shot or after your, your first shot, and then, of course, we had our big pod in November first, so April second was the fourth month, so we're good to go there. Governor's Day is on April thirteenth, I do plan on attending that. April thirteenth also, Richard is giving a, a South Dakota State University class on conditional use permits for horses. There's a professor over at SDSU, she, she brings Richard in once or twice a year to talk to the students on zoning matters and how to apply for a conditional use permit and how to look at a zoning ordinance, and it's a good thing that we got there. Stormspotter, we got our stormspotter scheduled for April twenty-six, of course, but there, if you can't make the April twenty-six one, there is one on April fourteenth at six-thirty PM, being held virtually, and another one on April twenty-fifth, being held virtually at one PM. We're working on our L E M P G, and that's all I have, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any COVID test kits left, or have you given them all away?
Oh, ma'am, we do have some left.
So, people that are interested could stop in your office?
Well, I mean, I've been trickling in slowly but surely, yes, we've got a sign posted in the hallway where they're at, and all we ask is they put their name down and how many kits they're taking, so we can keep track of, of what's going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty.
Forty in jail right now, but we had a couple guests last night, so there's forty-two presently, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. On the agenda there, Highway Department, which he has provided a report for us, also in our packet is also a report from Lori from the Finance Office. County Development, so. Number seven, scheduled agenda items, there are none, so we'll move on to number eight, regular business. Letter A, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash thirty-eight, State of South Dakota Consultant Contract for Provision of Community Health Services between Brookings County and South Dakota Department of Health, Family and Community Health, Child and Family Services. Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion.
This is just a routine contract, I mean, it does, did go up about two-point-four percent or two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars over last year's contract.
All right, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, an action to approve agreement twenty-two dash thirty-nine, an agreement between Brookings County and Top Coat Inc. for the twenty-twenty-two Brookings County Chip Seal Project. Motion to approve.
So move.
Got a second. Further discussion?
If you recall at the last meeting, the bids, the bid, the low bid was approved for Top Coat, so this is the contract with them to do the work.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash forty, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Eureka Township. Your motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Or, excuse me. Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Letter D, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash forty-one, an application of occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Lake Sinai Township.
Motion approve.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Letter E, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash forty-two, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Bangor Township. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Same sign, motion carries. F, an action to approve agreement twenty-two dash forty-three, an application for occupancy for right-of-way county highways made by Kim Brenzo of Ofton Township. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Letter G, an action to approve the remodel project for the viewing room of the gun range at the BCOAC for twenty-four thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Dustin?
Did you guys have any questions on any of that? I know we've talked about it quite a bit, we even got down into paint colors with all the volunteers, that got pretty extensive on communication and what people wanted, but the only change that I guess I'd have to this is that door, I actually talked to Jared with the city, and we kind of got together and figured it'd be better to put the door on the west side of that vestibule, which shouldn't change the price of the quote, but this would help better with egress, and then we like everybody to wash their hands in that sink before they leave, so we figured we'd push them that way to wash your hands, and then they'd exit, the door would swing out. So, that's the only change that I had to this packet, and then, I guess, the last page, I put together kind of a price sheet, and then I put fifteen-hundred dollars for like contingency, we might buy some fun educational, I guess, artwork pieces to put on the wall to help people, and then just kind of up to date. Yeah.
Further discussion?
I just have a question. Once, once we're done with this project, which I support.
Yep.
Are you anticipating any further remodels on the gun range?
I would, the only thing that I'd like to do is, we've talked with the board about making the exhaust fan in that makeup air unit larger than it is right now, because right now, we have a five-horse exhaust with a five-horse supply, and it should be, the exhaust should be bigger. I do have a quote, so if this, so fan and then floors, to answer your question, yes, we would like to take the carpet out of the gun range just with the lead and all that kind of stuff, just to make it easier to clean, but I figured that could be stage two next year, depending on the budget and what you guys approve. But yes, then I would like to be done with that, that side and just promote the place and bring people in. Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Action to, letter H, action to approve the updated gun range standard operating procedures document. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Okay, discussion.
We just, we didn't take anything out, we just added number three there, just to try to clarify a few things, when people bring their guns in, we want them just pointed at that safe wall, everybody gets a new gun for Christmas, they want to show it off in there, you really don't know if that gun's unloaded or not, so we just wanted to take an extra step. And then, number six, we added in unless otherwise approved by the director, just because we are getting in these different agencies that have to qualify and do certain things. So, yeah, those are the only two things we changed.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, thanks Dustin.
Thank you.
Letter I, action to appoint a member to the Extension Board to fill an unexpired term ending January ninth, twenty twenty-three. We've had two people apply for this. Packet, we've seen their applications. So, we'd look for a motion or a recommendation, approval of one of them, we have one spot open, correct?
Was, was there any correspondence with our, Sonia on this?
No, nothing directly, no. I believe one of the applications for Boothie was sent from her, I think that was turned into Sonia, and then she forwarded that on to me, but.
Look for a motion for one of the two.
Are you sitting on the board right now? And? Commissioner Bartley suggested that maybe we would want to do interviews with the two applicants.
You've never done that before, but I don't know if you'd be setting a precedent in doing that? Do you plan to interview all future applicants for board positions? If so, I say go for it. If not, that's not your intention, then I don't know that you should head down that road, but I also would maybe defer to legal counsel on that as well.
I, I mean, with Susan's past experience with the 4H and knowing history of 4H, I guess I'll make a motion for Susan VanderWaal for the Extension Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Letter J, discussion on adding a full-time correctional officer position at the Detention Center. This is a discussion only, so. Gentlemen, if you will introduce yourselves, please.
Good morning, A. Beitler Jail Administrator.
Morning, I'm Sergeant Cody Sunderland with the Brookings County Sheriff's Office.
On twenty-seven up there, I'll take off the cap. Twenty-seven fifteen, the, 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 discussion. And I was lucky enough to be a part of that as I was at the Detention Center as court deputy at that time. It was a long road, few bumps and. But we made it through, and January of, well, two years ago, I believe, Cody came on and we put our heads together at that time along with Bart and Sheriff Stanwick and made a plan, and we had, we had some pretty big plans, and we've implemented a lot of those, found out that some of them didn't quite fit with how the facility turned out for us and, and what our expectations were, and January of this year, Sheriff Stanwick and the commission gave us the thumbs up to move in, we moved in, and then we found out what we were up against. It's been good, like I say, we, we've had a, a few bumps and bruises here, and now we've come up with a plan to help us get through it. We've come up with the whys and hows, and Cody's the master at putting things together and charts and graphs and make it a little more easy to see our plan. Cody?
Yes, thanks for having us this morning. Like Dave said, I think January sixth is when we moved into the new jail, I think that morning, I showed up at seven in the morning and we didn't leave till about one AM, and we learned a lot in that first day, in that first week of trying to adapt to the new jail, new procedures, basically everything changed for us, how we booked people in, how we release people, how we manage our inmates changed. Things that we tried to prepare for, but honestly, until we were in the new facility, we didn't know how it was going to look. So, like you said, we've, we've learned a lot in the last few months, we've struggled through some of our staffing issues, and that's why we come today, is to hopefully solve these staffing issues that we're having for not only morale and things within our departments and our staff, but also for the safety of the employees and the inmates, and so that we have adequate staffing to do that. So, some of our staffing goals at this point, we're looking to operate the Brookings County Detention Center with full-time correctional officers utilizing the part-time and supplemental staff versus right now, we are running more hours among our part-time staff than our full-time, just because we've learned how many we need just to run the facility safely. We want to hire and retain qualified full-time staff, it helps us with productivity, things like that, long-term. We want to maximize our employee return on investment, we don't want to pay a lot of money for new employees that we're training, bringing in, hiring on, and then lose them quickly. And then we want to provide adequate minimum staffing levels for the safety of our inmates and our staff. So, what's changed? Obviously, last year, we were in the old jail, this year, we're in the new jail, we went from fifty-four beds to about eighty-four, we can add a few more if our intake is full, but long-term is eighty-four. We're now going to be taking the out-of-county contracts, we've started with Moody County now, we've learned a lot from that, and as we finish phase two, we plan on opening that up even further. We've noticed a large increase in our workload. In the workload, just is like, tending to any of the inmate needs, we have more inmates, all the way down to getting them toilet paper is part of our staff's duties. Increased in passing the meals takes longer, work release, we have more people on work release, those people have to be taken in and out of the jail, and then just clothing, issuing clothes to them and property management has increased. Our posts that need to be staffed has increased, we have kind of three areas, we have that booking area that all our intake and release goes through, we have our housing area, and then we have our control area, the control area has to have somebody there at all times, that person cannot leave, so that person can't help any of the other staff in the case of an emergency. The housing area needs somebody up there due to the frequency, the amount of time it takes for us to do our rounds, as we call them, to ensure that those, the inmates are safe. We need somebody dedicated to that to be able to manage that, and then the booking area actually stays pretty busy, and we have to have somebody down there almost all the time now.
Additional things that our staff does, just in addition to running the jail as routine duties, is transports. We had 25 transports in March alone. Those were not short transports just to the hospital. Those were all long transports to HSC, Avera, other places. So quite a few different things we have to use staff for. Medical visits, 24/7 duties, our part-time staff, if they weren't being used so much for regular shifts, would be used for the 24/7 and would be used for those medical visits and things. Juvenile holds, once we get to the point of having that possibility in Phase Two, it's something we're looking at, is if that does come. One of the things with that is we do have to dedicate a full, or not a full-time, but a staff member to that juvenile. That takes one person away immediately from that shift, who has to stay with that juvenile and make sure they're safe. If we weren't utilizing our part-time staff so much, we'd have an easier pool to call from, pull in right away to use that. So talking more about employee retention. Of those that left in from 2018 to current, on average, they were, part-time was here for 369 days, full-time was here for three years, 186 days. So we're seeing quite a bit better retention of our full-time staff versus part-time. Of our currently employed staff, the average length of employment for part-time is 299 days. An average length of employment for a full-time staff member right now is four years, 310 days, so going up on five years. So just to show that our full-time staff is staying much longer than our part-time staff. Why that's important is the cost and time it takes to hire and train in these new staff members. In total, we figure it costs about $3,730.60 to train and hire a new staff member. Of the staff members that left from 2018 to current, that's roughly $168,000 spent in training people and hiring people that left within a year versus $37,000 of people that had left in that time period and stayed that almost four years. So it's, our return on investment for employees is quite a bit lower, or cost is quite a bit lower, and we get a better return on full-time versus part-time. Back to that survey a little bit. Of our full-time staff, only one of them plans on leaving in this next six to 12 months. Of the ones that completed the survey, that's five of our seven full-timers. One is more than two years from now, and three don't plan on leaving the department. Some of their suggestions would be better scheduling, more training, and more meetings. Were the most common responses in that survey. Part-time staff, of the ones that completed the survey, one is planning on leaving in the next one to two months, three within the next one to three years. I know there's one that didn't complete the survey that's also looking at leaving in the next month or two. Two don't plan on leaving the department, and three would like to go full-time. So just to show that we have some that want to go full-time, and if we get the positions, we have the people to move into them. Their suggestions as well were the same. Schedule change would help them move into those full-time positions, more training and more meetings. How 12-hour shifts would look, this would benefit us the most. Of those, of the jails that I surveyed, all but one is working 12-hour shifts. It just seems to be the best working for a department that's working 24 hours a day and has to have minimum staffing levels of more than one. How those look is we would work within our pay period. You'd have two days on, two days off, two on, three off, and so forth. It allows them to have a three-day weekend. One of those shifts would have to either be eight, or two would have to be 10 hours. That's where we would utilize our part-time staff to overlap those shifts to allow our full-time staff to leave early, so we don't go over 80 hours in the two weeks. That's going to reduce overtime. They only have to work half of their month, which improves morale. It also gives us, one of the big advantages is only half of our staff is working a day, because they're either, those teams are either working or not working. So on those days off, now that they have 14 days off in a month, we have more time available to schedule trainings that they can all make it to, or meetings, things like that, for a few hours on their day off. It also helps me quite a bit with scheduling. I do all the scheduling. It's been quite a struggle I spend. I would bet 10 to 15 hours a week alone dealing with scheduling every week due to our part-time staff continuously changing when they can work, and frankly, just telling us that they can't be here on certain days next week or two days down the road, which is difficult to manage when you're already at a deficit trying to fill the shift. So our full-time to part-time ratio, right now, like I said, we have nine full-time positions and 20 positions for part-time, although we haven't been able to fill all those. How that compares to other jails in our size range, like I said, Brown County has 25 full-time positions. We are the only, only department within that survey that is utilizing more part-time staff to fill their shifts than full-time staff. Almost all of them are using full-time staff to fill all of their shifts, and then their part-time staff is supplemental during vacation days, sick time, or if they need extra people on for court days, things like that. So what we would be looking for is seven additional full-time correctional officer positions. That would bring us up to 16 total. That would allow us to have, on 12-hour shifts, four-person teams that would work, and then we would supplement part-time staff as a fifth person during our busier times, such as like Friday nights, Saturday nights. They'd be used during sick and vacation time, frankly, because they're not working as many hours as they are now. They, we've seen in the past, they're more willing to fill in when needed, because they're looking to work and make money, versus now, there's so much availability for it, there's just no desire at times for them to do it. That would not include the 24/7 coordinator. She's an additional person in there. We're already, so it sounds like a lot, but we're already actually budgeting and scheduling for that four to five-a-shift. Problem is, is we're using part-time people to fill those hours. So what we'd be doing is we'd be replacing what part-time is filling for hours with full-time staff. So we're not going to see a big increase in salaries for the hours that are being worked. Where we will see an increase is in benefits, of course.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I do have to leave for another appointment, but I wanted to make a comment before I went, before you finished. I apologize for the interruption. Basically, what we did when we built this jail, or started to plan for these jails, we knew that we would have to have some staffing changes, and probably more [inaudible] increase in inmates in the beds. What I appreciate more than anything else is this report. I look at this thing, and it justifies everything. You took the time. You took three months to put this together. You didn't come in at the, when you opened the jail and say, "Oh, by the way, we need five extra people." How do you know you need five extra people? This delineates your week request excellently, and I appreciate it. Thank you. You can continue.
Thank you, sir. Part-time staff, we could reduce down to, I figure about 15 positions. That would bring us down to having them only work 20 hours or less a week. That would make them not eligible for benefits, South Dakota retirement, things like that. And that's what actually policy requires. Then they would fill in for sick time, and the way that is, is if they're scheduled for 24, or 20 hours a week or more regularly. So we may have weeks that part-time staff is filling in more than 20 hours a week to help, but that wouldn't be the norm, so they wouldn't qualify for those benefits. So what that would cost, of course, is the big question. So what we figure with benefits on average are just over $23,000 per full-time correctional officer. Seven additional would be just over $163,000. How we pay for that is, of course, we're getting quite a bit of revenue. These out-of-county holds are also what are requiring us to have more staffing as well as we grow. If we hold 10 inmates per day at that $95 a day all year long, that's 346,000, almost $347,000. Today, we have 11 inmates out-of-county getting charged, so we are paying for this already today. That would still give us a revenue of over $183,000 just on 10 inmates. We figure we could have 30 inmates on average for out-of-county holds. So if we look at the next slide here, that just goes in to show you how much that breaks down to. At 10 inmates, we're at, you know, 346. We go up to 693 at 20 inmates, and over a million dollars with that 30 inmates a day, and the staff increases at only 164,000. So we're still getting plenty of revenue to run the jail and run the daily operations. Unfortunately, we would have to consider if we didn't have enough staffing or adequate staffing, how many we can hold to safely take care of those inmates and for the safety of our staff. So that would be a part of figuring that out later on, how much we open up. Some things to consider with this is due to the short average length of employment. The part-time staff alone poses a risk to the safety, just because when we utilize them more, like I said, over full-time, they just don't have the experience, the training, the time it takes to gain the knowledge to run things adequately. There is a lot that goes into being a correctional officer. It's not an easy job. They have to learn a lot of legal processes, a lot of bond forms. They got to learn how to deal with people that are mentally ill. They got to learn how to deal with people that are intoxicated. There's quite a bit that go into it, and we give them, frankly, very little tools to deal with that versus an officer out on the road who has 13 weeks of training in the academy and is giving multiple tools. We bring these correctional officers in and throw them in with the same people inside a jail who they have to deal with every day. Utilizing more full-time is going to reduce the number of part-time hours spent. It's going to reduce the number of hours I spend scheduling, so I can focus on other things with the jail. It's also going to reduce overtime. We're not going to need to have our staff work so much overtime just to cover these shifts. We'll have enough to do Things, other things to consider is we're one of only two departments, the sheriff's office on the jail, or the patrol side, and the jail side are the only two departments that I'm aware of that run 24/7, 365 days a year within the county. So our staffing needs to reflect that we are open all the time. The full-time staff for us is definitely more committed. They're better trained. They acquire more experience to create a safer worker environment. They usually step up more when overtime, things like that, when we need them. And then, like I said, the full-time staff would reduce the number of overtime. So again, just to recap, what we're asking for would be the seven additional full-time positions. We could reduce that part-time staff down to 15. We currently have 14 part-time staff members, so we would probably be more selective with our applicants than we have in the past, so we can get better qualified people just to fill that last spot. And then we would have to go from there to see, and in the future, we might find that we don't need 14, that we could be less, but that, I think, we don't want to cut ourselves short by reducing that too much and then find out later that we should have had more. Once Phase Two is done, I think that'll give us a better understanding then, and we can take a few months to reevaluate and see where we're at and what that creates for us. Any questions for us?
I guess the question that I would have, because that's a huge bump up in full-time staff. When you showed those [inaudible] 30 out-of-county inmates, are you saying that the facility, when it's completed, would be able to handle up to 30 inmates from out-of-county, plus our regular numbers, and not have any additional increase in staff, or?
Possibly. We won't know that until we hit that number and see how things look. Of course, right now, our daily average is running, I think, in the mid-30s. I think today we had 42, but of those, 11 of them are out-of-county. If we have 84 beds to offer, we obviously don't want to max that out. We want to leave room. But based on our daily averages, I think we figure in that 30 range is what we could hold out-of-county. The things that increase is, you know, you're doubling the amount of food to pass out. Medications are all delivered by our correctional officers. So those are things that are hard for us to gauge when we increase to that, how efficient. Why we've waited so long to ask is because when we first started, staff was new, and so everything was struggling. You know, they had to learn new processes. They've learned how to speed things up, and so now we know what they can handle and what we need to do that. And I think when we increase those 30, we may have to look at things, or we may find out that staff has learned how to handle that better and is able to, you know, keep up. Having that full-time staff that stays is what helps that, you know. Where we see things fall behind is when we have more part-time staff working, because they're just not as quick at getting things done, because they just haven't had the time to learn it.
So we can't use that 30 number because we think we might need more staff to make that work. What about the 20 number?
Correct. And those numbers were, I didn't, I didn't take out what salaries would cost. Those were just merely at 95 a day, how much revenue we would have coming in, not the expenses. So the 20 number, though, we would still be doing very well. I don't think we'd have an issue with 20 at all.
And with the, with keeping our part-time numbers up in that level, that's where we feel that we get to the point at the 20 out-of-county inmates or the 30 out-of-county inmates, if we have to add another part-time correctional officer during times of meal pass, during times of linen exchange, different things in that nature, then we have the capacity in that part-time pool to do that, and it would be at a reduced cost.
And if I, and I'm not sure I understood. So you're asking for seven additional full-time people, and you're going to keep 14 part-time people?
Correct.
So that's not really going to cut down on the scheduling stuff, because you're still scheduling 14 part-time people?
It would cut down, because right now, of those 14 part-time, they're working quite a bit more hours, and what we're having to do is bounce people around. There's no, it's difficult to schedule them regularly. So when we move into the full-time, it's easier, especially with those 12-hour shifts, to know that your four, your four main people are covered, and I know that's done, and now I just got to focus on who I can supplement with. Right now, with working with so many part-time, every day I have to look and see what I have to change a few days down the road, based on somebody telling me they can't make it now, things like that.
And I'm not necessarily opposed, I don't want you to take my questions that way, but when we did budget hearings last year, Barton Martin, and presented and laid out what was thought to be upcoming, our numbers were different, I believe, than what we're talking about today. And I, I'm going to imagine that part of that is, because now we're, what, three months into having the new jail operational, the new part of the jail, anyway, are we far enough along that you really have a handle on that, or we're not to budget time yet? So I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, today we have, like we said, 11 additional out-of-county holds, so even jumping to 20, I don't think would, with the five, would overwhelm us. You know, at the 30, if we have 60 total inmates, I think five probably would keep up, but, you know, until we're there, it's hard to, it's hard to determine, and that's hard to estimate, because some inmates are definitely more needy than others. And so, based on population, sometimes we can have weeks where our inmates are really good and we don't have any problems. And then, like, in the last few days, we've had an inmate in there that's extremely problematic, and so that requires more staff's attention, you know, and it just kind of backs everything up. So some of those things are difficult to estimate, and taking more out-of-county holds, we don't know who they'll bring. We know kind of our own clientele, so to say. A lot of our people are repeat, and we know who they are, how to treat, but we'll have to learn as we go.
What are the average hours, would the, would the part-timers have set, like, four-hour shifts, or eight-hours, or? No, I suppose it's all over the board.
Kind of all over the board. Right now, the standard is eight, but most of the time 12, just to cover the shifts, you know, and that's, that changes every day. Just last night, you know, I found out somebody couldn't make it this morning, so then I'm calling around at 11 o'clock at night to see who can stay late and come in early, so two eight-hour shifts turned into a 12-hour shift overnight.
I appreciate this report also. It's very good. I don't envy your job of scheduling of the part-time or anybody, but I'd also like to see qualified, trained people within the jail, and I feel if we have full-time people, they'd probably be more dedicated to the job also.
And one of my visions, or dreams, so to say, with it, is to create room for opportunity within it. I don't want to see corrections, and I came from a patrol standpoint, and so it's, I had quite the change in view of corrections now that I'm on this side, and I don't want to see it be that, just a stepping stone. It is for a lot of people into law enforcement, into a patrol type of, side of things, but I want to retain people, too. And I think we get a lot of people that we could, and training's a big thing with that. One of my things is I would like to see advancement, and on those teams, we could create a position called like a senior correctional officer. That person would be promoted to that position, and they would run their shift. That person would have to be a long-term, full-time person who knows how to do everything. Then when we get new people in, that person's also the trainer. That person trains how their shift is doing things, how you need to do it. That would keep things consistent. Right now, when we bring new people in, we have so many new people coming with part-time, that we're kind of just training them with whoever's there, and that doesn't help us with consistency. Unfortunately, the availability of the part-time staff is why I can't just say, "You're going to be with this person all the time," training, because they just simply can't be here when that person, full-time staff member's here.
And with the increase in full-time staff, that gives our other full-time staff the ability to go to different trainings. There are trainings out there for correctional officers, a mini boot camp, as you would say, that the, that the, the full-time law enforcement officers do have. And getting that training under their belt, they can bring that back, help train the new staff, help train the part-time staff, and it works on retention in that respect also.
Yeah, just a few. Within the last month, there was a training in Watertown. We tried to send people to, and we had planned on it, including myself, and because of the schedule, the way things happened, I ended up having to work a shift here as a correctional officer. And Dave and I have also filled in as correctional officers over the last few months. Last week, I think I came in early, 5:30 in the morning, three days, just to cover that busy time, because we didn't have enough staffing. Dave, as well, stayed late. But those trainings, we wanted to send people to, nonetheless, we couldn't get them there, because we couldn't have the staffing to work the jail.
Question. With the increase of seven full-time, I mean, you're right, we can't pay our part-time, they can't be working over 20 hours consistently, because then we're not compliant. And so that's the first thing we got to look at, too. Four full-time staff on, is that going to stay that way, or are you adding a fifth full-time staff now that you have seven more full-time, if you had seven more full-time positions? Because the four, if the four's not enough now, you're going to have to add a fifth, and that's going to increase cost and wages, you know, not just the benefits. That's going to increase the wages that are each hour that somebody's working. That's going to be increased, the wages. Are you going to try to keep it at four, but it seems like four's not enough?
So right now, we work four to five, is what we try to push for, but frankly, and I'll be honest, we've had days where there's three, and Dave and I have had to come in to help. We would like five. Five would be great for me, scheduling-wise, because then when someone calls in sick, wants to take vacation, if I could have five full-timers on, that would be the best thing I could have, because then when someone calls in sick, takes vacation, we send somebody to training, we're not consistently trying to find somebody to fill that spot. Starting out, though, until we open up for business, so to say, we know what we're going to look like six months from now, we would like to have four on, and then the fifth correctional officer would be part-time, and they would be during the busier times. Generally, during the week, from that midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning till 5:00 a.m., there's not a lot going on, generally. Now, what we've also seen, though, now that we've taken in more counties, that other counties are busier during those times, and so our intakes have increased when we didn't expect it, but right now, those are where we would supplement in. And then we would still be able to do that with our part-time staff that we currently have at that 20 hours. They would also help with 24/7. Right now, basically, some nights, anybody who's on shift is trying to help with 24/7, because we just can't get enough people there to do that. And so now that booking person's dealing with booking and 24/7, and so those would be filled in. And I believe that comes out of a separate budget, anyway, the 24/7 side of things. So that person can be there for 24/7, but still help out, you know. We can take things from a different route, as well.
Well, thank you for the summary here and all the numbers. It definitely does help us out, make, to make that decision and move forward and stuff, too. So, is there any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for your time, guys.
All right. Number nine, Commission Department Director's report.
If you recall, Finance Officer Lori Schultz had sent out an email at the end of last month, asking about implementing a grants policy. I think all of you had received that email from her. Is that something that you would like me to work on drafting and bring to the board? I think the biggest thing right now with grants is sometimes we don't know who's applying for them, and one of the rules that we've kind of, you know, we've stressed over the years, but then, as time goes on, you know, you forget, people will just apply because they think it's a great idea, but really, the process is coming to the commission first, to ask permission to apply, because sometimes you can't afford a grant, so to speak, because there's some other things tied to it. So, I mean, if you would like me to give a whirl at drafting something, I certainly can.
I think so, especially the ones who are matching funds or...
We do need to schedule a date for budget hearings. That's going to be a little bit difficult now with, with two of you, two of you being gone. I did provide some dates on my staff report that, that work on, for my schedule right now. Maybe if you want to look at those dates and let me know which of those work for you, and then I can maybe share that out with both Commissioners Boersma and Bartley, and see if we can't get something that works for everyone. I don't know if you want to take the time to do that now, or if you want to look at your calendars and get back to me on that. I can send those out, maybe, and...
We know. Do you want us just to tell you now?
Sure.
Okay. I'm, I'm gone the week of the 20th of June for the bar meeting, so those dates that are in there for that won't work for me.
Okay, so we're looking at either the 14th, 15th, or the 28th and 29th?
And, yeah. And I personally would like to see us do it on, on maybe the 14th, on a Tuesday, because I don't know about the rest of you, but I block my Tuesdays off for commission stuff, so.
Good to me.
Okay, I will share that out and see if the others are available as well. I have had a couple of townships reach out and ask about our local culvert grant process. We do have some money set aside once again this year. Kind of what I've been sharing is, you know, we're kind of, we're still looking at the rural infrastructure grant program through the state and getting all of those rules, and there will be a process in place, you know, for this year to request some funding from that program as well. But, you know, is there something that the commission still wants to do, just locally, here prior to that? If so, I can send out, kind of update that application that, that we've been using in the past and get back in touch with a couple of those townships that have reached out to me, or are you kind of thinking, just kind of wait and see? You know, it did get funded. We will be getting a portion of the $3 million that was allocated in 2021. We'll be getting that this summer sometime, based on the number of culverts that we inventoried. And then there will be a process for townships that have to complete a, like a work plan, kind of like our five-year plan. I think that process, and then the application form is all being developed at the state level, is my understanding at this point. I haven't seen anything come down on that yet as to what that will look like, but my understanding is that that's all getting developed at the state level, so it's uniform across the state. And then another bill did pass, and that got funded, I want to say, was it 20, 25 million over five years, I think?
We have $100,000
We do, yes.
Set in our budget, right?
So I could reach out and...
I think we need to keep with the program. I, I said, we've, we've gave indication that we were going to do that, despite what the state was coming with. We were going to review what criteria. I don't know if we're, our small group was going to review the criteria, if we were going to increase a percentage or decrease the size of the culvert to qualify. I think we should move forward with it, anyway.
I do, too, and I think we should get that word out, because it looks like this is going to be a dry season, and if people are going to, townships are going to do work on their culverts, this would be the year to do it, so.
Did we want to look at that criteria? I mean, our small group was Larry and Ryan and I, and Brian.
So what was the request? I mean, is the request, is it there, or were they coming with actual requests? Because we had requests for, instead of culverts, to help with something else.
I believe, I've heard from Eureka and Argo I believe, I've heard from Eureka and Argo Township, both, and I believe they're culvert projects, I believe, for both of those townships.
There were some culvert projects. There was a couple of townships that mentioned some tree removal, and then there was some beditch cleanout within culvert areas, you know, that would actually help with the culvert situation, so.
I mean, if we replace a culvert, is that something that could qualify for the funding down the road?
Potentially, it could, if, yeah. I mean, yes, culverts would potentially qualify for funding down the road for that program, yes.
So I just, you know, township money's tight, you know, and if they would turn around and have to put half in, we put half in on a culvert that would maybe qualify in a year or two, I guess, you know, that would be my concern, that I'd like to take advantage of that state money that's allocated to the townships and do that. Obviously, if there's an emergency, that's something, you can't wait for two years, you know, that needs to be done, look at that. But I'm just hesitant to turn around and replace something that might, unless it's an emergency, that might get funding within the next couple of years, because it's not an if, it's a when. I mean, they've approved the funding for it.
Yes.
We're going to have the opportunity to get that. We just have to make the application when it becomes available. So, I mean, I don't mind, we've got the $100,000 allocated, you know, if we want to use it for, you know, for a good project, I'm just wondering if we, on the culvert situation, we put that on hold, but we maybe look at other requests, expand it to tree removal, cleaning out, right-of-ways, you know, whatever townships are running into that are cost-related, that they could use some of that help with, rather than using that on culverts, which is kind of, you know?
Sure.
Unless it's an emergency, if there's one that's damaged and they need to, they're closing the road, or the weight limit is just really, really low, and we need to get that thing done this year, let's get it done. But, you know, I'd just like to take advantage of it, of the state willingness to help fund it.
Right. And that, it'll depend on the size of culvert, with the state being involved, or if we're involved, too.
Yes. Yes, there is that minimum size requirement for that culvert program through the state.
There's, I mean, there's some small box culverts out there that probably would not qualify with the state, but they, you know, would qualify for our program.
If we change our criteria on our program, because our criteria had stated a minimum size as well initially. So if we wanted to reduce that, we could, but, I mean, I could put a letter together talking about these other types of projects and culvert projects that are emergencies that, you know, cannot wait until the state funding becomes available.
I'd like to get Brian's input on, we need to sit down again and...
Why don't we sit down again?
Okay.
Get Brian involved there, and take a look at the state criteria, and then see if, what that is missing. Maybe we can fill in the gap, what that's missing, and also expand it. Maybe send a letter out to the townships, explaining the situation, and explaining what the state might be covering and what isn't, and they can get back to us.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll try to get a meeting scheduled with the three of you. I know Brian's been at different conferences here as of late, so I'll try to get that scheduled, so we can move forward on that. As part of your packet, there was an invite, or a public notice for the city of Brookings, a tax increment, District Number 12. That notice, that's actually at a meeting this evening at 5:30. There is a, and Bob had mentioned this as part of his report, too, and we had received some information on this Heartland Greenway CO2 pipeline information, so I had put that in your packet for your information. The executive summary, I handed out, just that monthly update from Chad Nelson, our project manager over at the Jail Project. I handed that out this morning. This was for the, in March. And then, let's see, some upcoming dates. Next Tuesday, we do have equalization boards at, that meeting will start at 8:30. That agenda will come out, I think today is the deadline, is that correct, Jenna, to file appeals? And so, once that deadline, we'll be working on that agenda. You'll see that come out later this week. Next Tuesday as well, at 1:00, we're having that special session to discuss the ARPA funds. We do have to have it here in the chambers. It's election day for the city, so they have the community room booked up all day, processing absentee ballots. So we will meet here in the chambers. Friday, April 15th, is Good Friday. We will close at noon that day. The Taste of Brookings, the annual celebration for the chamber, that's at Club 71 on the 19th. I have four of you, I know I haven't heard from Ryan yet, if you plan to go through the county, or if you, you won't be able to go. The cost, there is an option to do a table of eight for $400 from the county. I know, and then we have four commissioners going. I don't know if there would be additional staff who would want to go. I could sure reach out and see if we would get eight. It would be cost, you know, a little more cost-efficient to go with the table of eight, I can see.
Don't we get some free tickets to that?
Possibly. I'd need to check.
Would their membership be...
Yeah, and I could see how that would, how that would work if we get a table. Could reach out to the chamber and see, but I will work on that. May 11th, the groundbreaking for the interchange project. Having traveled up and down the interstate a lot recently, they are doing work out there, and they've got traffic on the northbound lanes moved to one side, so that's kind of exciting to see that there's some progress going on out there. And then in May, the NACO WEAR Western Interstate Region Conference, there's a few of you going to that up in Alaska. So that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
You said the chamber thing starts at 5:30, is that right?
Um, I just received a postcard, but I forgot to grab that. I'll let you know what time that is. The time, I think, just recently came out, so.
All right. Commissioner Stacy, State's Attorney's Office report. The reports, Leanne?
On Brookings Domestic Shelter Board meeting, I'm just working through some remodel stuff out there, not anything major. Margot, the shelter director, is coming up on her 25th anniversary, and we're talking about maybe doing something for her, but word will come out on that. And then on March 26th, there was the school forum held by Public Affairs Committee here in this room, and we had to add additional chairs. We had some people sitting out in the hall. We had a really good turnout for that, so that went well. I went to Brookings County Night at the Fire Department on the 29th, and that was just fun. There was, again, a good turnout. Commissioner Jensen and Bartley were both there also. I have a public affairs meeting on Thursday at noon, and we'll be talking about forums for the primary elections, and it looks like there's going to be quite a number of primary elections coming up. There'll be a primary for the county commission, because there are four Republicans running for three seats, and then there are, I think, maybe three other primaries, but I'll get that information to you at our next meeting. But we don't have a real long turnaround time. And I don't know if Jenna would have this at her fingertips or not, when does early voting start for the primary?
It'll start Friday, April 22nd.
So we're going to try to fit in some of the forum stuff before early voting starts. That's going to be a little difficult, so. That's all I have.
Attended the 10-county, there's a lot of talk about pipelines, talking about easements, county road crossings, what counties are able to request and get done, eminent domain, landowner negotiations, there was quite a bit of talk on that. Had an update from a couple legislators, and some upcoming legislators that are campaigning to be in peer. And on the 29th, also attended the Brookings Fireman's appreciation, and also on the 3rd of April, I went over to the Sinai Fireman's breakfast. It was very well-attended over there, and the food was great. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I attended Watertown, but March 15th, going back there, I was part of the strategic planning. I had a good discussion with all of the community leaders. Appreciate that quarterly planning session. On the 23rd, we had a beta meeting, and just, obviously, we did not get our grant, but obviously, need to continue to provide services, so continue to do that. More of an updated meeting than anything. And then on the 28th, we had the Brookings Health Meeting. Again, more just a routine meeting, nothing crazy there. Obviously, COVID has slowed down quite a bit, which has helped with the staffing there and everything like that, so that's about it, so. Next on the agenda, anything else? Next on the agenda is the executive session, in accordance with South Dakota Code of Law 1-25-2. So I'd look for a motion for executive session.
So move.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll take a 10-minute break and go into executive session.